All right, it's almost six thirty. We'll go ahead and get started. I would like to call the meeting of the Michigan City Economic Council to order. Today is Tuesday, February fifteenth, and we are now streaming live on Facebook. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and a word of silent prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. All right, thank you. All right. Ms. Nyala, on the roll call.
Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick. Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Prezabulinski.
Present.
Mr. Paul Prezabulinski.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jacobs.
Present.
And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have eight present and one absent.
And just to note that I did speak with Councilman Fitzpatrick. He will be late this evening, and we still are under the governor's executive orders for how we run our meetings. So just to note that for the public. Also, so we will move on to the approval of our minutes. The first set of minutes will be for our regular Zoom meeting for February first, 2022. Can I get a motion for approval of the minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Don Prezabulinski, how about second?
Second.
Second, Paul Prezabulinski. Any additions or changes or corrections? All right, Ms. Nyala, on the roll call.
Ms. Jacobs. Aye. Mr. Paul Prezabulinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick. Uh, Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezabulinski.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
All right, the next set of minutes was for our executive Zoom meeting that we had on February third for discussion of strategy with respect to the initiation of litigation or anything that's either pending or threatening. Also, to receive information about and to interview prospective employees. There was no action taken at that meeting, and you all received the minutes. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the executive Zoom meeting from February third?
Motion to approve.
No move.
All right, we have a motion by Jane Simmons.
Second.
Second by Paul Prezabulinski, any questions or additions or changes? All right, Ms. Nyala, on the roll call.
Paul Prezabulinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezabulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. Um, reports of standing committees. Any reports of standing committees? No reports of standing committees? All right, Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you, Madam President. The City Finance Committee meeting minutes from two eleven twenty twenty-two. Chair Tracy Tillman called to order the regular meeting of the Michigan City Finance Committee at eleven oh five a.m. on February eleventh, twenty twenty-two, held via Zoom. Roll call Tracy Tillman chaired conducted. The following persons were present: Tracy Tillman, Sean Fitzpatrick, counsel, Paul Prezabulinski, Prezabulinski, counsel. Also in attendance was Yvonne Hofmaster, City Controller, NG Deitch, counsel, and Caleb IT. Approval of minutes from last meeting, regular meeting held January twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, three aces, one nace. The opening issues were review claims and funds number two zero three one, Boyd Development. Review claims and funds number two zero four two. On my agenda, I actually did a clerical error, and the amount should have been in the Riverboat of thirteen thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars, and Boyd Development is zero. The new business that was discussed was approving additional appropriations in the budget of the local roads and street funds. Old business continued discussion regarding the MVH local roads and street funds. Also, the Finance Committee made recommendations to pay the claims for the four funds, number two zero four two, for the amount of ten thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. Counsel discussed the approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local roads and street funds for the balance of the twenty twenty-one miscellaneous paving project in the amount of three hundred eighty-two thousand seventy-one dollars. This will also be before the council for approval. Councilman Fitzpatrick asked if the three hundred eighty-two thousand seventy-one cents will be paid out of the Riverboat Fund. Controller Hofmaster confirmed that the balance will be paid out of the local roads and street funds. Councilor Deitch asks if there is an itemizations that shows the change orders for Rita Riley for the additional thirty-four thousand dollars. Controller Hofmaster said that she did not receive the itemization of the change orders, only, only, only some of the change orders. Deitch made a recommendation to see what those itemizations were for the cost of the thirty-four thousand dollars. Controller Hofmaster will reach out to the city engineer, Mr. Wright. Chair Tillman asked if Mr. Wright received any additional emails that the grant was not approved. Controller Hofmaster said no, because they did not want, they did not know that the project was completed before award letters were issued, and all three of these dates were after the completion date. Open for comments regarding the resolution eight two eight six. Councilman Paul Prezabulinski asks if there is a process in the grant processing for funds where we would know what the bidding and submitting amounts are in order to maximize our money. Controller Hofmaster not sure if, if she will be in attend, be able to make the council meeting on Tuesday night. Controller Hofmaster asks if there are any other questions, policy update, second, second readies on the two resolutions that she could answer now. None at this time. Chair Tillman made a request of Controller Hofmaster to have at least one of her deputies in attendance for Tuesday night council meeting. Meeting adjourned at eleven twenty-nine a.m. by chair. Motion by Paul Prezabulinski is second by Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Councilman Tillman. Does anybody have any questions? I'll take privilege for that. Any questions for council? Yes, Councilman Don Prezabulinski.
Uh, thanks, Madam Chairman. Yeah, uh, I don't have any questions, but I have a comment. But, uh, you know, with that thirty-four thousand dollars for the FOP change order, and you asked for an itemization of what that was actually spent for, I don't think that these bills should be paid until we get that information for that thirty-four thousand dollars.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the claims docket for February fifteen, twenty twenty-two. We have fund twenty forty-two, Riverboat claims, ten thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we accept the claims docket for the total claims of ten thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars.
Second.
Second by Mr. Councilman Matt. Um, any questions? Ms. Nyala, on the roll call.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prezabulinski. I'm going the wrong way. Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prezabulinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Prezabulinski. Mr. Paul Prezabulinski.
Aye.
Thank you. We have seven in favor and one opposed.
All right, thank you, Ms. Nyala. Claims docket is accepted. All right, are there any, um, reports of any special or select committees? Hearing none. I'm now going to turn the, this portion of the, um, meeting over to Chief Dionne Campbell. He's going to provide us an update on our twenty twenty-one crime statistics report. So I will allow, um, I know that he's sharing a presentation that, um, I think he submitted to, to Caleb, and also you should have received an email today, um, the full report. I think he's just doing highlights today. So, um, thank you, Chief. Welcome to the meeting, and I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Good evening. I'm glad to be here with you. Um, I thought it was important, uh, before we, um, go forward and release our crime statistics to the public, um, that you hear them. I sent everyone an email with the crime statistics attached, and I hope that you received that. Uh, that was sent to you, that document, so you can follow along or peruse that. What I'd like to do tonight is just go over some highlights of the twenty twenty-one crime report. I'll begin by saying a big thank you to Captain Kevin Urbansik, who, um, took the time to, to put together a very, very detailed report. And, uh, Caleb, if you would, uh, go ahead and pull up my screen, and I'll start the PowerPoint.
Uh, for you to share your screen, you would hit the share screen button on, on, under your, on your screen.
Okay, the shares. Okay, and where would that be located at, sir?
On the, on the Zoom menu, there should be a green share screen button.
Okay, got it.
And then you would choose your PowerPoint.
Okay. And share. Can everyone see that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Give me one moment, trying to figure out how to navigate it. Okay, I think I've got it figured out. Okay, um, I'll start off by talking about our calls for service details. Um, and this is just going to highlight the types of calls we received, um, in twenty twenty-one, and there's going to be a comparison with the year twenty twenty. So if you look at total calls for service in the year twenty twenty, you see that we had forty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-two total calls for service. In twenty twenty-one, we had a decrease for calls of service, um, and that was down to thirty-seven thousand three hundred and fifty-five, which was a decrease in calls for service in four thousand one hundred and sixty-seven calls. In the next column, you'll see total incident reports completed. And in twenty twenty, we had a total of five thousand and eighty-eight reports. Uh, but I find this, uh, quite staggering that we had in twenty twenty-one, five thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven total incident reports completed, and that was an increase in six hundred and seventy-nine case reports. Also, uh, when we look at the total amount of arrests, in twenty twenty, we had a total of one thousand five hundred and seventy-nine arrests. Fast forward to the year twenty twenty-one, we had one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three total arrests for an increase of three hundred and eighty-four people. So we actually arrested three hundred and eighty-four peo, more people than we did in the year twenty twenty. And if you begin to break that down, in twenty twenty, there were a hundred and eighty-seven juvenile arrests, and in twenty twenty-one, there were two hundred and nine juvenile arrests. In twenty twenty, uh, we arrested one thousand three hundred and ninety-two adults, and in twenty twenty-one, we arrested one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four adults. On the next screen, um, I want to look at accidents. I think that that's important to note how accidents have increased in our city, and, and, um, a lot of these statistics are going to drive what we build in the future. Um, this is, it was a very compelling report for me, and it just identifies our issues. Some we knew, some we did not know, uh, but it, it leads us towards the pathway of what we need to fix and correct. It shows us what we're doing well, and it shows where we're going to put our efforts into. In twenty twenty, we had one thousand seventy-nine accidents, and in twenty twenty-one, we had an increase of a hundred and thirty-nine, where we landed at one thousand two hundred and eighteen accidents. I find that very significant, um, an increase in the number of accidents. When we look at property damage crashes, in twenty twenty, we had nine hundred and forty-five. In twenty twenty-one, we had one thousand fifty-eight. Uh, again, the total increase was a hundred and eighty-nine. Personal injury crashes were a hundred and seventy-eight in twenty twenty. In twenty twenty-one, that number went up to two thirteen for an increase in, uh, thirty-five personal injury accidents. In twenty twenty, we had four fatality crashes. In twenty twenty-one, we had five for an increase of one. Look at citations issued. In twenty twenty, uh, the total amount of citations issued, then we'll break those, those citations down. We had a total of five thousand nine hundred and seventy-five and a significant decrease in twenty twenty-one, where we went down to three thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine. We had a decrease of right around two thousand citations issued. Uh, and that breaks down, um, into warning tickets, which were four thousand eight hundred and eight. Also, in twenty twenty-one, there were three thousand and twenty-one for a decrease in warning tickets and one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two. For our non-moving tickets, in twenty twenty, we had one thousand one hundred and seventy-two. In twenty twenty-one, uh, we had nine hundred and fifty-eight, um, and that was a decrease in two hundred and fourteen. And then we look at our local ordinance tickets, and we had a total of three hundred and nineteen in twenty twenty and an increase of seventeen to three hundred and thirty-six. One of the things that this tells me, first of all, um, we're short manpower. We're operating at seventy-three officers, and, uh, we're aggressively looking to hire more officers. And one of the things that we need to do in the future is to increase our traffic division, to rebuild the traffic division, because currently, um, it's a one-man operation, uh, which is Captain Jeff Lenesky, and that's one of the things that we're looking to build as soon as our numbers increase. I'll go to the next slide, and we'll look at, um, some other calls for service details. Let's look at drug overdoses. Total drug overdoses in twenty twenty, there were ninety-four. In twenty twenty-one, there were ninety-two for an increase in two drug overdoses. We look at fatalities, um, six was the number for twenty twenty as well as twenty twenty-one, and there was no change there. Um, those that survived in twenty twenty, um, eighty-eight, and in twenty twenty-one, we get eighty-six that survived drug overdoses. Let's go to drownings, which is our next category. In twenty twenty, uh, we had seven drownings, and in twenty twenty-one, that dropped to, uh, four, uh, for a decrease in three. Um, in twenty twenty, we had three fatalities from drownings, and in twenty twenty-one, there was also three fatalities. In twenty twenty, we had four near drownings, and in twenty twenty-one, we had one near drowning for a decrease in three. Next category would be calls assisting code enforcement. And, um, in twenty twenty, we assisted code enforcement eight times, and in twenty twenty-one, um, we had an increase of thirty-six up to forty-four, and I think that that's an important aspect as we look to collaborate, um, with our city and making sure that codes are being kept to par. Let's take a look at violent crime statistics. I know that, um, that is a big issue nationwide. And we look at what's going on nationally, we understand that there was a thirty percent increase nationally in murder, uh, homicides, and also an increase in gun violence. So let's look at, uh, some of those statistics, uh, on violent crime, uh, for our city. In twenty twenty, we had eight homicides. In twenty twenty-one, we went down to six, which is still six too many for a decrease in two. Total shots fired, um, in twenty twenty were three hundred and eighty-seven total calls for that. In twenty twenty-one, uh, we had an increase in twelve calls for total shots fired, and which was three hundred and ninety-nine. Non-fatal shootings in twenty twenty, there were twenty-four non-fatal shootings. In twenty twenty-one, there were nineteen non-fatal shootings, which was a decrease, um, in five. In twenty twenty, we had ten stabbings. In twenty twenty-one, we had eight stabbings for a decrease in two. Um, I think it's also important, uh, one of the things that the city council wanted to know about is where are the crimes happening? Uh, what's taking place in the neighborhoods, especially that you have oversight? Um, and we've compiled a list of where the violent crime has been reported. And also, on the paperwork that was emailed to you, you'll see a much more detailed, um, statistics on the, a report that was emailed to you. We see the hundred block of Edward Street in Eastport, two hundred block of Ridgeland, the one hundred block of Seymour Avenue, the eleven hundred block of Buffalo Street, the one hundred block of West Homer Street, the thousand block of Wall Bass Street, the five hundred block of West Tenth Street, fifteen hundred block of East Michigan Boulevard, Salem Street Corridor, Pullman Park, Washington Park, and Kings Inn. And, um, this is going to help us to know what areas need targeting, where we need to saturate our efforts, and we are truly looking forward to increasing our numbers as a department so that we can become more robust and be more of a presence in the neighborhoods. And I am a hundred percent confident that as we get up to the numbers that we should have, and, uh, we begin the hiring process and get officers back on the streets, that we'll be go, are going to be able to push back on some of this violent crime that is happening in our city. Let's look at some of the areas where there was a high call volume. Elston Grove area had one thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven total calls for service. The Eastport area had two thousand eight hundred and thirty-two total calls for service. We look at the West Side, the West Side had one thousand and two total calls for service. Meyer, um, grocery store had three hundred and forty-six total calls for service. Walmart had five hundred and twenty-three total calls for service. Lighthouse Place, four hundred and seventeen total calls for service, and Washington Park, two hundred and forty-three calls for service. Next category would be firearms collections, and this is a big concern with all of us. We had foresight to know what was coming, uh, some of our task force members. Uh, we had talks about it, and this is also happening nationwide. And let's look at some of the numbers for our firearms that we, um, apprehended, uh, in twenty twenty, and then we'll compare that with last year. In twenty twenty, um, total number of firearms collected was one hundred and five. We increased that number, um, by eighty-seven, and we apprehended one hundred and ninety-two firearms, which is very, very concerning, uh, the increase in firearms that are out there. And a lot of that has to do with some of the gun laws, the easy accessibility. Uh, but we are, um, always doing our best to push back on these things, and as you can see by the increase in the number of guns that we took off the streets last year. Of those, uh, numbers, um, they consisted of, in twenty twenty, there were eighty-four handguns. In twenty twenty-one, we, um, apprehended a hundred and sixty-five handguns for an increase in eighty-one. Twenty twenty, we apprehended twenty-four rifles. In twenty twenty-one, uh, we apprehended nineteen. Uh, we were actually down five, not up five. Uh, we look at shotguns and... And we look at shotguns in twenty twenty, uh, we apprehended eight, and in twenty twenty-one, we apprehended nine for an increase in one. Uh, let's look at some driving offenses. Driving without a license, um, I think we had some significant increases in driving without a license. In twenty twenty, um, that number was seventy-three people who were cited for driving without a license. In twenty twenty-one, that was ninety-four people for an increase in twenty-one. Um, arrests made for driving without a license was six, and then we had an increase in twenty-one of eighty-six. Um, and those, there was a large increase there in our arrest. Leaving the same property damage, uh, we had a hundred and twenty-nine in twenty twenty. In twenty twenty-one, we had a hundred and sixty-three, uh, for an increase in thirty-four. Operating while intoxicating, um, in twenty twenty, there were forty-one arrests. In twenty twenty-one, there were sixty-six people that were arrested for operating while intoxicated, and we had an increase in about twenty-five. And our officers have been very, very diligent in going after those offenses. And I think as we increase our numbers and we build a more robust traffic division, that's one of the emphasis that we're going to have as soon as we get numbers, is to have a saturation of traffic officers, uh, within our department. Look at stabbings in twenty twenty, we had ten, and we had a decrease in stabbings in twenty twenty-one, uh, we went down two. So look at some of the crime rates, um, the percentages. Violent crime was actually down point three-three percent. Firearm offenses were up twenty-two point seven-eight percent. So we know that firearms are a big issue in our community. Crimes against a person were down, um, five point seven-five percent. Sex offenses were down ten point five-two percent. Crime rate against property, uh, was down four point one, one-four percent. Interference with government such as resisting law enforcement was up four point two-nine percent. And drug offenses were up ten point six-three percent. Overall, our crime wa, rate for twenty-one, twenty twenty-one as compared to twenty twenty was point one percent. Um, so we basically just maintained what, um, happened in twenty twenty. There was really not a significance increase, um, in that area. When we look at the way forward, um, obviously, um, we're currently staffed at seventy-three officers. Uh, when I came on to the department, we had over, um, a hundred. Uh, one of the things that we are doing now is aggressively looking, um, to hire. Um, it is imperative for us, and, uh, the process that we're going through with the wages is very, very important for us uh, because we really need to hire quality officers and maintain quality officers. And so, um, getting us to a competitive wage, um, is necessary. And also, about the sixth or seventh year, um, being able to give incentives to retain officers is going to be very, very important, especially when we look towards the future of Michigan City and all the building that's going on. Um, our ability to staff is going to be very, very important. Our two primary focuses, um, as we get more officers on our department, will be to fill the voids in our patrol division and in our detective bureau. Um, even though we're shorthanded, um, both divisions have been working very, very hard, uh, to push back uh, against what's happening nationally, and they've done a terrific job, uh, with the numbers that we have. And they're working overtime, they're covering one another. It's just, um, a, a very admirable effort that they're putting in with the numbers we have, and, and that's why we're aggressively looking to hire. In fact, we have a, um, an application process that'll, uh, be on this Saturday. Uh, one of the things we're going to do when we look at the guns, when we look at the violent crimes that are on the streets, um, we're going to develop a street hawk unit. Uh, the street hawk unit will be dedicated unit, um, that will hit the streets hard and go after the violent crimes. And, uh, we're already watching officers there, aware that we're going to put that unit together as soon as our numbers, um, get to where we need them to be, and we are truly looking forward to that. Uh, another goal as we look forward is to build a robust traffic division and make such a big difference, uh, when we can consistently make traffic stops and, um, deal with some of the things that happen as people are driving and, and slowing people down. It's very, very important for our city that we build a culture where people know that, that correct driving patterns is an expectation. Um, we're going to make additions to our La Porte County Drug Task Force as soon as we get more numbers in our fast unit, um, both of which are, are very, very important. We're fortunate to have them, we just need to shore them up. And again, overall, our crime rate, uh, was up zero point one percent. Final thoughts from me. Um, final thoughts from me is um, I think that the Michigan City Police Department is is in a great place. We have a world-class facility, it's one of the best facilities in the state of Indiana, and our training um is top-notch. And what we have to offer is policing, being the largest police department in La Porte County, there's a lot of um options that people have. And our, it's just getting us to that competitive wage. And I know that everyone is trying to get there, and uh that's very, very important for us. And we'd just like to really, really see that done because it's going to be important for us going forward. Um, just understand the psyche of police officers right now. Um, over the past two years, there's something that I call the stages of public opinion. Um, when we look at police officers over the past two years, remember when COVID hit, everyone loved law enforcement, everyone loved first responders, and uh they were appreciative of us. Then when the protests came, uh, the public opinion said defund the police. Uh, we don't want the police in our neighborhoods, we don't want the police doing anything with us. And then when the crime spiked up, people were saying, where were the police? And so we are waiting um for public opinion to land on what that looks like. We are building a department that um is community police oriented, where all our officers understand the value of that. And I think it's important for all of us to see the uh, I think it's important for all of us to see the future, the direction that our city is going. And and in seeing the future, I believe that we have to put and implement things now um and not have the future ra- arrive in us being not prepared. When I look at the numbers of potential people, the population explosion, the building explosion that is happening on our north end, um, it would behoove us to put in place some things now together. Um, I'm of the position, um, there's, there's no blaming anyone. I think it's a great time, a great position for us to begin to work together. I see three major components for the safety of our city, the building of our community. Uh, we're going to build the culture of the Michigan City Police Department. We've got a young department, and uh it's a great time right now. People have settled in, the people that are here want to be here, and uh they want to be a part of this, what we're building. And we're going to build a very robust culture um that is community oriented, but aggressive at the same time. We're going to work with our elected officials, and we're going to solicit the help of our community. And I think those three components working together, um, we can take Michigan City to where it needs to be. Um, if you have any um questions or comments from me, um, I'm, I'm open to answer them.
All right, at this time, so let, um, Caleb, can you um stop sharing the screen so I can see everybody?
All right, one second.
All right, thank you. Chief Campbell, you may have to stop, stop your share.
Okay.
There we go, thank you. All right, um, I saw Councilman, um, Don Privalinski's hand up. Um, a- and again, thank you, Chief Campbell, uh, for presenting um the statistics. And uh, again, look forward to working with you. So Councilman Don.
Yeah, uh, Chief, thank you very much for the uh information. And I just want to say that uh I stand behind the Michigan City Police Department a hundred and twenty percent. And I stand behind you a hundred and twenty percent. And uh, I have, since I've been on this council for twelve years now, almost twelve years, uh, excuse me, I have always supported the Michigan City Police Department in equipment, in cars, uh, body armor, uh, cameras, uh, what have you. And I know that Michigan City's Police Department, uh, through the help of the Michigan City City Council at that time, helped uh give every one of our police officers a body camera. And I know that there's other departments in the uh county that still don't have body cameras. So I'm proud to say that we took care of that. And whatever the police department needs, feel free to come in front of the city council. And I will support any uh things that you're trying to get done, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, man, Councilman Don. Um, any addition? Um, Councilman, uh, Gene Simmons.
I concur with uh Councilman Presz Valinsky and as well as uh the chief. Uh, then the chief myself, when Deion first came on the department, we had over a hundred officers. Uh, I look forward in increasing the staffing. You have to have more officers in order to be proactive. Uh, being proactive, you're, you're able to be more co- community oriented. Uh, that was a, that's, that's a key component, getting out there and in the community and 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 doing different initiatives. Uh, I just can't say enough. And absolutely, uh, we've got to keep working on the increase in salaries. Uh, there's a lot of piracy going on across the country and locally. Right in our backyard, uh, we're having officers uh stolen by other departments. Uh, I think we just lost two officers to Chesterton. Now come on.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, those things that, those things we need to correct. And we do that by increasing uh the pay. And of course, uh, the chief is building the right atmosphere at the department. Uh, we just need the, a system, a partner up and do our share. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, I'm Brian Dabey.
Uh, real quick, and Councilman, I mean, I'm sorry, uh, Chief Campbell has heard me mention some of this before. Um, just wanted to give us take on um some of the thought process that I was, I was talking about. Um, I've seen other big cities come up with some real concrete solutions that cost a little bit of money um in order to help solve crimes that happen in the city. Uh, one that we've been seeing or that I've seen and a couple of other council members on here as well, we've been talking about this. Uh, in Councilman, uh, Mag and Councilwoman Giga's, the ring doorbell systems. Uh, we have seen where, and this is, these are tried and true, where the city has subsidized putting ring doorbells in people's homes. Um, and so what happens is 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 once these ring doorbells are put in by the city, now let's say you have one out in front of my house and a shooting occurs right in front of my house at, let's say, two thirty P M. You know, if it's subsidized by the city, the police can come and say, hey, we need to see uh that camera footage out outside of your house at, you know, between two and two thirty, so you can actually watch those things and get leads on uh, you know, some of these shootings. And, you know, one of the shootings that you had listed was right here on Ridgeland, which is right down the street from me uh here. And what I heard that day, it happened in broad daylight, I was at work, but I heard there were lots of people out there. And there weren't very many leads turned up uh to assist you guys with that. So I don't know, you know, but it just, that was something that I saw that I think we have a chance now with those A R P funds uh that we have in the city, about thirteen million or so right now, that we could be looking at. Uh, also ShotSpotter technology, I'm sure you're familiar with it, uh, something that other big cities have, where if shots go off in a certain part of town, you know, the, the sound pings to things that are hanging on telephone poles, whatever it may be, um, it, it gives you a pinpoint um occasion of where shots are fired. If you have units in the area, they can respond quickly to those shots. Uh, so we, you know, can more effectively use the police that are out there on the street from shootings and things like that happen. Um, so hopefully, um, I know I actually, you know, put that in, that that's something that I want to see someone on the committee of of spending our A R P funds that would really love to see uh us explore in terms of getting some help uh around the city to make it safe. I, I think that is just kind of the, the new way of going. I saw something this morning where the city of Atlanta is doing something similar um in terms of the, the camera uh footage and things like that. I have to give more detail, but I just heard a quick report uh this morning about what the city of Atlanta was doing. And hopefully, uh, we can sit down with the, the chief of police, the police department, be in, 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 and talk about some of these concrete things that we can spend money on to help uh with safety here in Michigan City.
Yeah, uh, well said, and I agree with you. There's a lot of technology that could give us an advantage that would increase the safety in our community. Um, there's a lot of things such as drones um and and other technology that we could utilize. We actually had a crime solved um by using the technology that La Porte County had with license plate reader. They solved one of our um shooting victim cases because of what they had. Uh, I think that I've matured as a, a chief of police and um understanding that uh I believe that this council wants to empower um our police department. And I'm more aware now than ever before of the value of bringing things to a workshop so that everyone can understand it and get a clear picture of what the technology does and what it doesn't do. And I think as we go down that route going forward, um, that we'll work together and put in place systems, uh, implement technologies that will make us a, a, a cutting edge and very, very effective police department. So thank you for your com- comment, Councilman Dabey.
All right, thank you. Um, Councilman Tracy Ch- Councilwoman Tracy Chomen.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, this question is to Chief Campbell. Um, in your stats in regards to the numbers for the accidents for twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, would you happen to know for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, um, how many or if any of those accidents involved any um Michigan City police vehicles?
You're on mute, Chief.
So that I wouldn't know, I know, I know we had um an unusually high number of accidents and uh we'll, we'll take ownership of that. Um, if you need the exact figures, I'd be more than happy to get them, them to you. Uh, but I, I would be remiss if I didn't say there was an increase in accidents overall. I think we had over a hundred and thirty more accidents in the city. And uh, I, I, I can't pinpoint why there was such a large increase in accidents in our city. Uh, it could be just a, a more tourist here or just our roads being more crowded at this time, but it's something that we have to look into. If you desire to know exactly how many accidents we had, I'll get that information to you. We'll be very transparent about that.
I appreciate that. And my, my reasoning behind that question was being on the finance committee, being the chair on the finance committee, um, if this was not, if these were repairs, um, that was sent out with um the standard uh three poles unless this was repairs that could have been done in-house or will we need to be in the future or in the near future looking at replacing any of those vehicles?
Sure, I get any information that you want from me, I can get you. I can't determine if it could have been fixed or not. I'm, I'm not that mechanically inclined, so uh it's not one of my strengths. But I'd be more than happy to get you the statistics you need and, and uh those that work on the vehicles, they can better answer that question.
Okay, thank you. I would appreciate that. Thank you, Chief Campbell.
Right, additional comments? Um, yes, Councilman Michael Mack.
Hey, Chief, that was an excellent presentation. I was uh glad to hear it. Uh, so some bullet points that uh, you know, throw out some questions possibly for you to answer or, you know, or comment on uh, and some of my commentary. Number one, I just love the community oriented police theory that you uh expoused when you first started. And I'm glad you're uh talking about how you're growing in that theory. Past practice, because a lot of this that we're talking about from a statistical point of view is, is the theory of policing. I, I remember the first uh presentation you gave to us about the original pl- theory of policing. Uh, but past practice in the USA was uh dominated by Rudy Giuliani in New York. It was called uh Broken Windows Policing. And there are some theories that go along with that that were practiced throughout the United States and even in Michigan City. It was on our website, uh, using that as an example of, of how to do that. And you can look that up yourself if people want to know what that is, but it's a, it's a theory of policing of how to stop it. And it, to me, that goes directly into these statistics that you, that we just discussed. Um, and listening and hearing the statistics and impacting the statistics are two totally different conversations in my mind. And impacting those statistics are, are not mostly a function of policing. It's a function of community uh involvement and policing. And that's, so that's why I'm so in love with what you're talking about, community policing, because if there's not a you know, the police just can't show up afterwards and, and, you know, they can fix the problem that exists, but they can't stop the problem from continually happening. That is uh on the community to stop creating uh young people that uh exhibit these behaviors. And a lot of them are, are young people. I, I see the last names a lot of times, and I've been, been involved in some of these conversations. They're children, or in my case, the grandchildren of people that I know. Um, so some of the numbers that I was uh just interested in uh and uh about the im- impact of the statistics, uh, what, if we were to, I, you, you gave the, the neighborhoods of, of these uh incidents that happened. But is there a way that we can narrow it down to the addresses? Because I, I've, I've heard of uh ways that city councils uh look at the quality of management of uh, uh places that manage housing units or individuals that are actually uh renting units. If we have to go to this particular address thirty and forty and fifty and seventy times, it's no longer you guys' problem. It shouldn't be. It should be somebody. Why is this guy allowed to continue to operate a uh, a place where this address is always coming up? Um, calls for service, uh, we use neighborhoods and, you know, like Eastport, old school names that we've used forever. But uh, wouldn't it be a better dynamic to uh do that by population divided? So uh, Eastport neighborhood divided by the population that we're talking about, calls for service, to actually get to why is the crime happening? It's not happening because it's Eastport or because it's the West Side. It is based on that population. Um, and my last point really, uh, it kind of ties into the uh pay. But if we're just going to pay people so they can move out of Michigan City to get quality housing, we're not solving anything. If we do not aggressively pursue quality housing where a professional that is well paid can find a nice place to live within the borders of Michigan City. Um, to me, it's all for naught, because you've got to have these youngsters having examples of quality police, quality adults, quality coaches, quality uh interactions with these people on a regular basis. Because when we were young, they lived here. But now, it's not because they don't want to live here because they're so scary. It's because the quality of our housing has depreciated so low that if you're making a decent professional salary, it's really, really competitive to find a nice place to live. Um, so comment on it if you want, Chief, you and I can talk offline, but those are just my two cents on it. And I think it was a great presentation, and I'm looking forward to us uh creating things to develop our youth to stop this uh, you know, creating some of these behaviors in the first place. Thanks, man.
And, and let me say, let me say, it's uh, we've been, we got two more council members that may want to say something, so um, let me, uh, three that haven't spoke, so let me confirm with them. And then we would probably take it online just to move the, move the council meeting along, um, Chief. But I'll let you have some parting words before we um finish. Um, did any other council members have anything else to add? I know we have, um, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick has uh joined the meeting, um, uh, Ms. Nyla. And I know we have Councilman Paul Privalinski on the phone. Did any other council members have any comments?
I, I do have a question for the chief, two, two quick questions. Hello?
Yes, yes, Paul.
Um, Chief, um, did I, was that all oversight? Or did you mention anything about uh car thefts in the city of Michigan City?
No, I didn't, not in, not in the power source. I believe those statistics are attached to the report uh that was
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir, you can check that and you'll, you'll find those stats.
All right. The uh, my second question is this, would you have a uh problem with creating like a uh district map identifying uh crimes and that in the six, we do have six districts. And if, uh, is that correct? And go by districts on, and do a layered map so people could review the map and see what's going on in certain neighborhoods and try to identify the problem um as being involved in their neighborhoods. I, would you have a problem with that, developing that? I know you might need some uh, might need to talk to I T about coming up with uh something, but you know, it might be a tool with, I think it'd be a positive tool with what you're going after on that community policing aspect.
Councilman, I think there was a map attached that if I Councilman, I think there was a map attached. If I didn't attach it, I know that Captain Urbansy did do a map, because I know that was one of the things that you had asked for last year. If it's not attached, then I'll make sure that that map gets to you. So there, there is a map that has been developed and
Okay.
May not be exactly what you're looking for, but there, there is a map on the handout.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
Any other comments? All right. Well, well, thank you, Chief Campbell. And again, I'm sure we'll be hearing from you in, in the upcoming week, so appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you. All right. Ms. Nyla, are there any petitions?
There are no petitions this evening.
All right, Ms. Nyla, Communications.
January 28th, from McFormic State, concerned to add hats regarding the health, safety, housing authority. Correspondence was also received February 4th, from Controller Hofmaster. With report the next and they happened on January 22nd in a Michigan City Police Department vehicle. Correspondence was also received on February 8th from Key, Cops, and Needle, Vice President Elston Grove Association, advising the common council
Ms. Nyla, there is something happening with your volume.
Is it too loud? You can't hear me?
You were muffled. Now we can hear you.
Okay, I'm supposed to talk into that, but I can't. Okay. And correspondence was received February 8th from the Elston Grove Neighborhood Association advising common council of the reappointment of Ms. Laura Henderson to the Michigan City tree.
All right. And just to go back, there was correspondence on the 28th from Mr. Rattan McFormic and regarding the health and safety of housing authority. And on February 4th from, from Controller Hofmaster of an accident that happened on 12222 in an MCPD vehicle. All right, Ms. Nyla, first resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only approving the proposed contract for legal services from Harris Law Firm PC for the Michigan City Common Council. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch, Ms. Tillman, and Mr. Fitzpatrick. Can you hear me now or no?
Yes, yes, I can hear you. All right. Are there any comments from the sponsors? Comments from the sponsors? All right, I will relinquish the chair to Councilman Don Privalinski.
Yeah, Madam Chairman, go ahead, Councilwoman Deitch.
Yes, so this is in reference to Attorney Jim Meyer gave us his notice in, in, back in December of his retirement from the, the common council. And during the month of January and early February, we received inquiry to the clerk's office from the Harris Law Firm. We actually had an executive session on the 3rd that had no action. But we did receive a proposal. This is a resolution approving the proposed contract for legal services. I did send this to Attorney Jim Meyer to review and Attorney Amber LaPage, who offered some suggestions. And that is what is before the council at this time. I know that when we go to public comment, we do have representatives from the Harris Law Firm. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from Mr. Harris or your, or or Mr. Snow? I mean, is Mr. Snow still on here? Yes, there he is.
Good evening, Madam President and members of the council and the public. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to submit the proposal. Harris Law Firm provides legal services for municipalities throughout northern Indiana and we look forward to the opportunity. Hopefully with your favorable vote to provide you with services. I have one of my senior associates, Nick Snow, is also here just to say hello. If there's any questions or additional comments that you'd like to hear from us, we'd be more than happy to provide that. Thank you.
Any additional comments from the public? Caleb, do you have anyone on, on, on Zoom that would like to speak?
I see no hands raised.
All right, thank you. Any comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Don Privalinski.
Yeah, Councilwoman Deitch, in this contract or this resolution, and then the contract, it runs through the end of 2022, correct?
I didn't confirm that. I will let Councilman, I mean, Mr. Harris answer what we have in the terms of the agreement that was sent. I didn't get a chance, Don, Councilman Privalinski to go back this afternoon.
Yes, it does. It does run through 2022, yes.
All right, perfect. Any additional comments from the council?
Madam, Angie?
Yes, Councilman Paul.
I, I was thinking about all of this and I was wondering, was there ever RFP put out?
No, there, there was not an RFP put out. What was put out and there wasn't previously either. What we did is we asked specifically, and I did at both council, well, actually at three council meetings, that any attorney submit a letter of inquiry to the clerk's office if they would be interested in pursuing the common council position for the remainder of the year. And we received one inquiry and like I said, in session, I did have some conversations. But again, we didn't receive any. And, and I did also inquiry, put place inquiry out to other org, well, other organizations out in South Bend that utilize the services of the Harris Law Firm just to get some feedback from them as well. So no official RFP. It wasn't done previously either. But it was, a letter was submitted by Attorney Meyer for the public and it was mentioned on multiple council meetings. And I believe it was also mentioned in the newspaper as well. And we received one letter of inquiry.
Okay, and I guess the other, the other question I have, or two questions, is are we going to keep Mr. Myers on for a length of time to make sure there's a smooth transition? And then how many, how many municipalities specifically dealing with ordinances and resolutions does? Because from the meeting we, the meeting we had, I heard a lot of the representation of what they're doing and I, I really didn't hear a lot of municipal work being done per se with ordinances, resolutions and the, the transaction of our business as a, as a council. So with, with that, maybe they can expound on how, how many, how many city councils do they represent? Because it, it's not like representing the school board or working in for a county and doing reviewing land acquisition or anything like that. But it, it's totally a, a different perspective on, on government.
I, I will answer one part of it and then I'll let the, that Mr. Harris answer the remaining part. As far as Attorney Meyer, we on a month to month basis with Attorney Meyer. So if this is approved this evening, there will be a transition over the next two weeks. We will not be, I did ask that question of Attorney Harris if we will be billed for February and we would not be. So there will be an overlap for the next two weeks as we transition. Unless we have something outstanding, which I don't believe we have any outstanding litigation that Jim is representing us on. So I, I, that, that would be the only question I had for, for them as well as we prepare for our March meetings. But other than that, as far as their background and their, and what they've worked on and working with municipalities, I'll let Mr. Harris or Mr. Snow answer that.
Thank you. We currently represent 20 different municipalities from as far west as East Chicago and as far east as South Bend. That representation includes actual representation of the city. I have personally represented city councils in the past. We prepare ordinances and resolutions for a variety of those municipalities in different capacities. So we represent health departments where we prepare ordinances that are specific to subject matters affecting the health department. And we also prepare resolutions and ordinances on behalf of city administrations at the request of corporation council and the mayor. So, you know, because our municipal practice is so varied, we represent various entities within municipal corporations. And I think you'll find that that experience will bode very well for the Michigan City Common Council.
Any additional questions from the, the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to make, move and make a motion that we accept the resolution appointing the proposed contracts for the legal services from Harris Law Firm.
All right, we have a Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Tracy Tillman and a second from Michael Mack. Ms. Nyla on the roll call.
I do.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick? Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Privalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Privalinski?
Nay.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye. We have eight in favor and one opposed.
All right, thank you. The resolution passes. All right, Ms. Nyla, the next resolution by title only.
Question redevelopment commission to prepare and implement one or more programs for construction and or repair of residences in Michigan City pursuant to IC 36-7-14-45 ET sequence and IC 36-7-14-53. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Privalinski.
Madam Chair, can I make a request to be read in its entirety?
Yes. Ms. Nyla, would you want me to read it or?
I'm worried about you guys not hearing me, so yes, if you would, please. Thank you.
I know that your microphone's. Sorry about that. Resolution, oh, requesting redevelopment commission to prepare and implement one or more programs for construction and or repair of residences in Michigan City pursuant to IC and IC 36-7-14-53, et cetera. Whereas the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission has spent millions of dollars on improvements to foster economic development in Michigan City, it has not spent any significant part of the millions of dollars, the city taxpayers' dollars it receives every year for constructing and or improving residences in the city. And whereas the common council finds that there is a serious need to address the deficiencies in the housing stock in the city by constructing new home, new homes on the numerous empty lots and residential areas and by repairing and improving existing residences in the city that are in need of same. And whereas the redevelopment commission is authorized to plan and implement housing programs in the city inside and outside of existing TIP districts by IC 36-7-14-45 and IC 36-7-14-53, but has failed to do so despite the obvious need for such programs in the city. And whereas the Michigan City Council finds that it would be in the best interest of the citizens and businesses of Michigan City for the redevelopment commission to prepare and implement plans for housing programs to construct, repair and improve residences in those areas of the city as authorized by Indiana law. Now therefore be resolved that the common council of the city of Michigan City requests that the Michigan City Redevelopment Commission promptly take appropriate action and conduct appropriate proceedings, including obtaining input from the public to prepare and implement housing programs in Michigan City as authorized by IC 36-7-14-45 and IC 36-7-14-53 to expand commission funds for the construction, repair and improvement of residences in Michigan City. The commission may monthly, two, the commission make monthly reports to the common council regarding its efforts to comply with the common council's requests. This resolution to be effective upon adoption by the common council and approval of the mayor. And this is introduced by Councilman Paul Privalinski. Any additional comments from the sponsor before we move to public comment?
Yes, I, I would, uh, I think this is a vehicle that we can accomplish many things that people have talked about this evening and in previous council meetings about helping people in these areas on their housing needs and building new and repairing existing housing for the housing stock of Michigan City. With, it's in the state code that they, they can and they have the authority to do this. We're just asking them to take consideration and put something together and, and look at the needs in these different TIP areas and even outside the TIP areas. So I think that that hits on one program that we wanted to spend $330, $330,000 there for, something like that earlier this year out of the Riverboat Fund to do weatherization, to do roofing. And we could do a lot of these things if we could all support this and move forward and put a program together to help people in the city. So with that, I, I would hope everyone could support it 100%. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Paul.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. All right, I would like to open it up to the public. Any comments from the public? Are there any comments from the public? Caleb, are there any comments from the public?
There are no hands raised.
All right, thank you. Comments from the council? Any comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Don Privalinski.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I believe this resolution is pretty straightforward and simple to understand. And I believe that it could help many individuals in Michigan City. Both folks that are possibly looking to build a home or possibly get repair work done to their home. Depending on how the program is developed and how it's administered. I don't know how these programs are developed and what the requirements are or anything like that. But I think that's a good thought process and that we ask the redevelopment commission to take a look at it and try to adopt something. With that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Uh, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, uh, we have a motion on the floor and a second. Uh, Ms. Nyla on the roll call.
She's muted.
Oh, she's muted.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Mr. Fitzpatrick, we did not hear you.
I'm, I'm sorry, uh, nay.
Mr. Matt?
Nay.
Ms. Deitch?
Nay.
Mr. Don Preswellinski?
Yes.
Mr. Simmons? Mr. Simmons?
Sorry, nay.
Ms. Jagus?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
And Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
We have two in favor and seven opposed.
All right, thank you, um. Ms. Nyla does not pass. Moving on to our first ordinance, um, by title only on first reading.
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the local road and street fund for the balance of the two thousand twenty-one miscellaneous paving project. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Preswellinski.
All right, does the sponsor have, um, any comments?
Uh, no, I, uh, not at this time.
All right, thank you. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
There are no hands.
All right, comments from the council? Yes, Councilman, uh, Brian Dabney.
Um, just, um, thank you for, uh, the recognition. Do, we had a, a change to this, a, uh, an amendment? Are we, are we gonna talk about that amendment on this as well tonight? There's an amendment that came out late on this change of the dollar amount.
Probably not the person who submitted it, but did you have any comments for this? Particularly? You still have time to do, they still have time to do it, is all I'm saying, but I didn't know if you had some additional comments for.
Oh, no, I think I commented enough on this last meeting.
Okay.
Do you wanna talk about the dollar amount?
All right, um, any, um, any, yes, um, Councilman Don.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Madam President. And that, uh, thirty-five thousand dollars for that change order that's been discussed, that's part of this thirty-eight, three hundred and eighty-two thousand, correct? Okay, and we still don't have an explanation, uh, for that or a breakdown, an itemized list. Uh, you know, I, I, for me, I, I can't see moving this on until we get that information that was requested.
There is an amendment that you may have not received, and I think that's what.
No, I, I did not, I did not receive that.
Okay.
Did not receive that.
I think he was trying to get in, um, but it was loud. Councilman Sean.
Okay, no, that's fine, but my point is, is, uh, without that explanation, I, I, I would make the motion to, uh, to table this until we got that explanation about that. But, uh, with that being said, I, I can't make that motion. I'll wait for the amendment to come out. That was just my, just my opinion.
Thank, thank you, Councilman Don Privalinski. Um, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, yeah, I did have an amendment to offer up to this. And it was, uh, short in response to what Councilman Preswellinski was just, um, alluding to. And forgive my background, but I'm, I'm traveling, so, um, but the amendment was for three hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eight dollars at fifty cents, which would directly, uh, remove that change order until we have the explanation or itemized breakdown of what those funds will be spent for. So, um, I would like to make the motion to approve this amendment, which would be, uh, removing that change order. And it would be in the, uh, amending the amount to three hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and fifty cents.
And so we have, have a motion on the floor and, um, we need a second first and then.
I have a second.
All right, we have a second by Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Um, we were advised in, in email by Controller Hoffmaster that the cents needed to be rounded up, uh, or down. So I just wanted to share that if, um, the council, um, would, uh, would authorize a friendly amendment to, um, take the cents off.
What's the title of that again?
Um, Count, Controller Hoffmaster sent, um, a correspondence acknowledging the fact that it should be a rounded number versus cents for the, um, amendment, um, in email to all of the council members. So I just want to.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Is that, uh, or maybe, um, maybe Attorney Myers can answer that. Is that a rule or is that just a, a request?
Attorney Jim?
I believe that's a requirement now under the Indiana rules regarding filing items in gateway, which is where this would have to eventually be filed.
So it.
Okay, I'm leaving it rounded.
Round it, but it makes sense to round it up to nine oh nine, so removes any doubt.
But I would like to, uh, make that motion to remove the, to move up to three hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and nine dollars.
All right, we have the motion on the floor, um, from Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick that was received an email today. Um, removing the change order, um, from, uh, Reethen Riley uh, of the thirty-four thousand and, uh, I don't have the, the exact amount, but he just gave that to us. So, um, and a second by, uh, Councilwoman Tracy Tillman. Ms. Nyla on the, on the vote.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski? Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick? We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. And let me clarify the amounts that you have it, um, uh, uh, Ms. Nyla. It was three, three hundred and forty-seven thousand nine hundred and nine dollars.
Thank you very much.
We're good? Okay.
Yep, thank you.
All right, so the ordinance has been, um, uh, amended to reflect the, um, the amount. Which is still on first reading, and this will be, um, held over for a second reading. All right, Ms. Nyla, um, let me make sure I'm on the right one.
Okay, you ready?
Yes, I'm ready. So Ms. Nyla, next, uh, next ordinance on first reading.
Okay, an ordinance on first reading by title only, amending section two dash four six two of the Michigan City Municipal Code regarding membership of the Youth Leadership Commission. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Are there any, um, comments from the sponsors?
Yeah.
I'm at the start. All right, um, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
No hands raised.
Thank you. Any comments from the council? I relink, I would like to relinquish the chair to, to give an, an explanation. Councilman Don Privalinski?
I heard Councilwoman Deitch.
Yeah, so this, um, is, so as you know, for the last six months, I think we have been trying to, um, to get the youth council or at least to fill those seats. So, um, what this is doing, it's changed, the dynamics changed of the youth coun- commission where, um, the, the age was, um, a higher range that went up to twenty-two years old. And what we found is we had a lot of, uh, youth that, um, went off to college and went on, you know, or went on to do different things and we were having trouble backfilling. And we had a, a, we were very specific in having, um, certain number from each high school and things of that nature. All this did is, um, it allows, um, any Michigan City resident, um, that attends a school in Michigan City to be selected, but it also gives the opportunity for the schools to make recommendations, um, as well. But it lowers the age so that we can include middle school and high school students that attend, um, schools here in Michigan City. Um, and hopefully this will allow some of the attrition not to happen so fast. Um, but also we're finding that when we start talking about violence and youth and all that, it's starting in middle school. Um, so this may be an opportunity to get buy-in from not just, um, high schoolers or people who were are aging out and leaving or going to the military, but also from a group of students that, um, as they matriculate through the commission, will have the opportunity to, um, mentor, um, students that come behind them. So that was the purpose, so that, uh, we can get the commission back up and running, uh, and that was it in a nutshell. Thank you. Uh, this will be held over for second reading. All right, first ordinance on second reading, Ms. Nyla by title only.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating section two dash three two seven on the Michigan City Municipal Code to be known as the Policy and Procedures for Declaring Bad Debt Uncollectibles. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and co-sponsored by Mr. Dabney and Mr. Don Preswellinski.
Are any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public?
No hands were raised.
All right, thank you. Any comments from the council? This will be held over for third reading. All right, Ms. Nyla, the next ordinance on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, creating section two dash three two six of the Michigan City Municipal Code to be known as the Capital Asset Policy. And this is also introduced by Ms. Deitch and Mr. Brian Dabney.
All right, any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? This will be held over for third reading. Oh, before I say that, I'm sorry, can't do that. Um, for, uh, let me make sure. No public hearing, yes. That will be held over for third reading. All right, Ms. Nyla, uh, our next ordinance on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Park Concession Fund for the Zoo Big Cat Exhibit Expansion Project. This is introduced by Ms. Jagus and co-sponsored by Mr. Dabney, Mr. Don Preswellinski and Ms. Deitch.
And this was published in the Herald Dispatch on February second, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-two. And we will hold a formal public hearing, um, this evening. Are there any comments from the sponsors?
I don't wanna recap the whole thing, but, uh, this is basically moving money from the concessions fund to finish their big project for expanding the cat house. And, you know, I was going to ask for, uh, second and third reading today afterward on the public meeting because, uh, I think the sooner they can get the bids out and the project started, the better.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments from the sponsors? All right, we are now, um, holding our formal public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
We are showing no hands.
Thank you. Any comments from the council? Did you want to, uh, make a motion to do second and third reading, Ms., uh, Councilwoman Jagus?
Yes, I'd like to suspend the rules and do second and third reading today if we can.
You need a motion for that and a second, and then we'll take a vote.
Again, second.
Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilwoman Jagus to do second and third reading and a second by Councilman Paul Privalinski.
Angie, Don Privalinski.
Don.
Well, yeah, I, I know, I'm, yeah, I made the second.
Thank you.
Make, make sure all the paperwork's right, that's all.
Yes, I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Nyla on the roll.
Angie, Ms. Deitch?
Uh, aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski? Mr. Paul Preswellinski? Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Depp, Ms., Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick? And Mr. Matt?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. We will now move to third reading, uh, by title only.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Park Concession Fund for the Zoo Big Cat Exhibit Expansion Project. And this is introduced by Ms. Jagus, co-sponsored by Mr. Dabney, Mr. Don Preswellinski and also Ms. Deitch.
Any comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Any comments? Thank you. Any comments from the, the council?
Make the motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Privalinski. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Dahlia Jagus, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Yeah, Preswellinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus? Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Ayes.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick? Mr. Matt?
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
We have nine, um, in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. The ordinance passes. Um, the last ordinance on second reading, uh, Ms. Nyla.
An ordinance on second reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget um, of the Park Operating Fund for the additional full-time zookeeper. And this is introduced by Ms. Jagus, co-sponsored by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Deitch and Mr. Matt.
Again, this was published in the Herald Dispatch, February second, twenty twenty-two. Formal public hearing will, um, occur this evening. Are there any comments from the sponsors?
Uh, not too many. We're just going to, uh, move money in the park's budget so they can cover zookeeper, which they very much need. So that's all. And again, I'm gonna try to get second and third reading on if we can today so that they can start looking for quality zookeeper.
Thank you. Any additional comments from the co-sponsors? All right, we will move to our formal public hearing. Are there any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
Seeing no hands.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the council?
I move to go to third reading.
We have a motion for third reading.
Second.
Second by Councilman Michael Matt. Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Did you say Paul Preswellinski?
Yes.
Nay.
Ms. Tillman.
Did you say Ms. Tillman?
Ms. Tillman.
You're fading out.
My apologies, um, nay.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
And Mr. Don Przewlinski.
Aye.
We have six in favor and three opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla, um it passes. Moving on to new business, um we have FYI, Mayor Perry is requesting advice and consent.
In order.
Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
This was just a second reading.
Third reading.
Yeah, thank you. I got ahead of myself, we were moving so fast. My apologies, everybody. So now we are moving to third reading for this.
An ordinance on third reading by title only, approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Park Operating Fund for the Additional Full-Time Zookeeper. And this is introduced by Ms. Jagus, co-sponsored by Mr. Dabney, Ms. Deitch, and Mr. Mack.
Are there any comments from the sponsors? Comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
Seeing no hands.
Thank you. Any comments from the council?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Przewlinski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Michael Mack, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski. Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
Yes, this is not an emergency, nay.
Tillman.
Nay.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Nay.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Well, Mr. Don Przewlinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have six in favor and three opposed.
Thank you. Now to go to new business in order. FYI, Mayor Perry is requesting advising consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding the reappointment of Ms. Melody Haines as a member of the Michigan City Human Rights Commission. The term begins immediately and expires two two twenty-six. I don't know if Ms. um Melody Haines is online, but I would like to give an opportunity if she is um as we go to the advi- advising consent.
We need to see Melody Haines.
All right, thank you. And so um Mayor's requesting our advising consent, is there a motion?
President, yeah, I uh I make the motion uh to nominate Melody Hayes for the Human Rights Commission.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Don Przewlinski and we have a second by Councilman Gene Simmons. Um on the vote, we can actually, since this is an appointment and a reappointment at the advising consent, we can vote this evening if if no one is opposed. You're good?
I agree, I agree.
All right, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Przewlinski.
Is that Don Przewlinski?
No, Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I like that, mister. Yeah, aye.
Ms. Tillman. Aye. Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Mack. Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Przewlinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. The next FYI, Mayor Perry is requesting the advising consent of the Michigan City Council, Common Council regarding the appointment of Ms. Mary Nell Murphy as a member of the Michigan City Tree Board. Uh term begins immediately and expires twelve four twenty twenty-three. She is replacing um a member that has resigned. Is Ms. Mary Nell Murphy um in the audience? All right, Ms. Mary Nell, um Ms. uh Murphy, would you like to make the comment?
Yes, I am here. Um I'm very much looking forward to working on the tree board with the existing uh board and um taking care of our our precious resources.
Thank you. All right, um is there a motion for Ms. Mary?
I'll make the, I'll make the motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Paul Przewlinski and a second by Councilwoman Dahlia Jagus. And Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Ms. Tillman. Aye. Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Przewlinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
And Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. Um FYI, the Common Council has one appointment to the Michigan City Enrichment Court. Term expires March thirty-first. This is an FYI, the incumbent is Ms. Connie Anderson. We will take nominations at the next council meeting. So if there's anyone in the public who is interested in being on the Michigan City Enrichment Corporation, y- you will need to fill out a Common Council Board and Commission form and it will be due by next Wednesday at noon. Next, we have an FYI, um the Common Council has one appointment to the tree board that expires um March fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. The incumbent is Laura Henderson, and this is made by the Neighborhood Association. Um and I'm not sure if it's a specific association, I would need to look at the code. It's Elston Grove, isn't it?
Elston Grove.
Yeah, so this is made by the Elston Grove Association, um so um we will need to.
We did receive a letter.
All right, did we?
Yes.
And can you uh tell us who we received the nomination for?
Uh Laura Henderson, and it's from Elston. Elston, yeah, Elston Grove Neighborhood Association.
All right, so we have received.
I would like to make, I would like to make a motion to nom- nominate and accept the nomination of Lauren Henderson.
So the nomination, so um we've received the the letter, so we can vote on, if you want to uh move to to um to uh support Laura Henderson, we can vote this evening.
Right.
Yes, I make that motion.
All right, motion by Paul Przewlinski to um support Laura Henderson as our appointment to the Michigan City Tree Board, and who was the second?
Second.
All right. Brian Dabney and Don Przewlinski. All right, Ms. Nyla on the vote.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Mack.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Przewlinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jagus.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Przewlinski.
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of our um new members to commissions and reappointments. Um tonight, we have the nomination for uh, the Common Council has one appointment to the Michigan City Fire Mayor Commission due to um the resignation of Mr. Ricky Jackson. This term expires twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, and I would like to open the floor up for nominations. Uh yes, um Councilwoman uh Tracy Tillman.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to nominate Ms. Desiree Hawkins for the Fire Mayor Commission.
Uh I think her form said Desiree Nichols.
Nichols.
Desiree Nichols.
Yes. So that's a nomination. And Councilman Don Przewlinski.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Fred Adrian. Fred Adrian.
Fred.
Support.
And uh you there, so so we have two nominations. This this vote won't happen till next uh the next meeting. Uh we have a nomination for Desiree Nichols and Mr. Fred Adrian. Uh is Mr. Fred Adrian or Ms. um Desiree Nichols um in the, yeah, I see both of them. Um Ms. Mr. Adrian, would you like to say something?
I'd just say, like to say hi to everybody. Uh, man, I'm ready to fall asleep for this meeting. But uh, no, no, I really appreciate it. I just uh hoping uh pray that I can do some good with the fire department. We uh, I think we've got an excellent fire department, and I'd just like to get on the bandwagon. I've been retired now for uh three years, I think it's been. And uh I was thought about getting on the bandwagon about uh about two years ago. And then uh, I don't know, things started happening here, grandkids and stuff. I think everything's down on a low key now, so I could try to try it again.
All right, and thank you, thank you. And Ms. Nichols.
Yes, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Desiree Nichols. Hawkins is the maiden name, Tracy. Uh, you got it right. Um, I'm very much interested in becoming um a fire commissioner. I've always wanted to be of service uh to my city. And when this opportunity came available, I just um had to apply. I think a fresh face with new ideas, maybe taking a look at how we're doing things and what we need to do differently would be would be beneficial, not only to the commission, but also to the firefighters, then ultimately to the citizens of Mi- Michigan City. So I'm asking the council to seriously consider me when when making your decision, and I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you to both of you, and thank you for stepping up to apply in in any um any uh citizen that steps up to apply for um these boards and commissions, we appreciate your service. So at the next council meeting, uh we have uh nominations of Mr. Fred Adrian and Ms. Desiree Nichols. Any any additional nominations? I didn't close it, so. All right, thank you. Next, uh we have nominations for the council um for the following appointments to the Commission of the Social Status of African-American Males. Um the terms expire two fifteen twenty-two uh twenty twenty-two. Yeah, th- these are expiring this um today, actually. Uh so let me uh give a little uh background. So we had a resignation from Latanya Troutman, and we received um Fay Moore, is that correct? Um uh, Ms. Nyla?
Yes, that was. But she was a mayor's appointment.
Okay, she was a mayor's appointment, all right. And uh Ms. um Albertine Allen, we did receive a a letter from from her um for resignation, but also for um the minority health partners no longer um being apart, which will require uh an update to the ordinance here in the near future. And I don't, did we receive any additional letters?
No.
So we don't have any um actual nominations for this evening, but I wanted to address um the fact that um we did receive resignation letters. Uh one from the uh Health, um from our Health segment. So we need to um deal with these um empty positions here in the near future. All right, are there any comments from the public? Comments from the public?
No hands from.
No comments from the public? We must still be celebrating Valentine's Day. Anyway, uh, all right, any council comments this evening? Yes, Councilwoman Dahlia Jagus.
Yes, this is pertinent to what we just talked about. You know, we get those nominate, people nominating themselves for boards and commissions all year. It would be very nice to get some kind of a spreadsheet or something saying this person would like to be on these commissions and their application expires whatever date. If we can organize that so that we have a place to look, because right now, we don't really know from a whole year ago who submitted one of those, you know, forms that have a lot of things checked off. So I think we just need to get a kind of a little more organized to know what people are volunteering for what boards so that we don't have to just ask, Ms. Nyla, if last week we got something or whatever. Yes.
My office would be very happy to, when there is um an FYI, to send you all the copies we do have. Like for the enrichment, I have six applications already, so I would be glad to do that. Um and several of them don't, when they do apply, they have like five or six of them that they want to be on, so totally.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Let me know, yeah.
Um additional council comments? Yes, Councilman Don Przewlinski.
Uh a couple of things. Number one, I'd like to talk about COVID, although it's going, it seems to be uh starting to go in a negative uh way, which is good. Uh there's, at the Salvation Army, okay, this is going out, at the Salvation Army here in Michigan City. They're gonna be doing free COVID testing, uh and vaccine. Uh they're gonna start tomorrow, Wednesday, February sixteenth, and it's going through Saturday, the nineteenth. And that's at the Salvation Army on Franklin Street. It's gonna be from two PM to six PM every day. And no, there's no appointment necessary. They're also gonna have the rapid and the PCR test available. And uh they're also gonna have the vaccine, it's free. They're gonna have the Pfizer, which is a two-dose series available to individuals ages five years and older. The the Medrum, it's a two-dose series available to individuals eighteen years and older. And the booster doses are also available on the site. So here, that's another opportunity right in the middle of Michigan City to go and get your COVID test and shots and booster if you have not got it yet. Now, the next is the uh, what 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 I perceive to be a big issue that's gonna happen here in Michigan City, and it's gonna take place at the Board of Works meeting this coming Tuesday, when the Board of Works is gonna make a decision on whether to close Eleventh Street down totally from Chicago through Michigan Boulevard, and the only three roadways that'll be open will be uh Washington Street, Wabash Street, and Franklin Street. And those streets will be alternating depending on what type of work is gonna be uh done. Uh I've taken a little poll with just the folks that I know, and I haven't seen anyone that has grasped this idea, thinking that it's a very good idea. And I I know that uh I don't think it's a good idea either, and I don't think it's gonna be effective. I think what NICD needs to do, and apparently we're doing this because NICD had stated that apparently they're running out of money and they needed to do this from a cost standpoint, and if they didn't do it, that the project would be in jeopardy. Well, I don't buy that, because I don't believe that this project was ever gonna be in jeopardy. Uh now that they tore down the Eleventh Street South Shore Station, and they bought up more than fifty parcels of land, and they tore them all down, that they're gonna turn a right from this project and say, we can't do it now, so. that they're gonna turn a right from this project and say, "We can't do it now, so everything is gonna be the way it is." We all know that they're gonna go straight ahead and get this job done. So, instead of shutting all these streets down, I believe for the sake of common sense, for the sake of the citizens of Michigan City, and for, especially for the sake of safety, for the fire department, for the ambulances, and for the police department, and for people to maneuver through the city, and for our summer guests that'll be overflowing the city, for them to be able to maneuver in a commons- common sense approach. I believe that more uh, cross streets need to be open, and to start with, I believe that Ohio Street should be left open and closed as necessary, and that Spring Street should be left open and closed as necessary, and at least give relief to those two sides in those neighborhoods. And especially Ohio Street where you have a fire station that has to respond to the south side of Michigan City and to that part of the city. Now they're gonna be closed off, we're gonna have to go all the way back to Washington Street, or Franklin Street, or Wabash Street, if I said that, or, yeah. And use those streets to get back to where they had to go to. I don't think it's a good idea. I think that the Board of Works really needs to take a hard, serious look at it and vote, vote for this for the people of Michigan City, and not for NICD, just for them to rush and get their project done and put the city, put, put the hardship on the citizens of Michigan City. And finally, you know, I, I, I've heard, and that, you know, well, you know, you gotta, people are just gonna have to take some pain to get some gain. Well, I don't, I don't believe in that philosophy. I believe in a common sense approach, and I also believe in some compassion that you gotta, you gotta be able to work with the public here, and not to shut them out of your mind and say, "Well, you know what, just deal with it." No, we're better than that. We just don't have to deal with it. Let's make a common sense approach. Let's do everything that's the best for the citizens, for the citizens to be able to move around their city. We gotta remember, we're the ones that pay the taxes in, in Michigan City, and we have given up a lot of money. We have given up millions of dollars to NICD for this double-track operation. So we don't need any outside influences making decisions for the people of Michigan City. The people that are on the boards have to make the right decisions for the people of Michigan City. And I hope the Board of Works doesn't go along with this program, and that they go ahead and open up a couple more streets for people to maneuver and for the safety vehicles to get around the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Don Privilinsky. Uh, any additional council comments?
Ma'am?
Yes?
Woman, uh, Deitch, uh, I would like to, uh, also add my thoughts on that Eleventh Street, and I totally concur with my brother Don on the hardship that I believe that this is gonna put on the citizens of Michigan City, the citizens of the west side, midtown. And I really believe that, um, the city of Michigan City is is given, given, and given, and I want to refer back to a, uh, workshop that we had, um, o- over a year ago about keeping um, Pine Street open, and that it was brought up at that meeting, that workshop, and it, and, uh, I asked it, it would be difficult to keep Pine Street open, because they want to close Pine Street, you know, that leads to the downtown, downtown corridor. Well, it was said by Mr. Nolan that, yeah, we could do it, but it might delay the project, uh, six months. But now, they want to shut down all of Eleventh Street to save money for this project, and Councilman Don Presiblinsky is absolutely correct. I don't think people realize that we gave them, the city of Michigan City gave them all of the north side of Eleventh Street to easement. I don't think the citizens of Michigan City realize that Eleventh Street is gonna be one-way all the way through town and the hardship that it's gonna put on people. But maybe, i- if they approve this, I hope that they approve a traffic study now that will get some numbers on how much traffic is going down those streets. This is utterly absurd. And I think that we're already spending money. We spent money out of the Redevelopment Commission to make it look better and probably gonna spend more money, so. Yeah, it's, it's really, uh, it's, it's kinda sad, because the people in Michigan City are giving everything. But you know, if you look at the plan, they're not putting a double track all the way into Gary. There's many sections that are still single-track. So on the final analogy, it's, I hope, I concur with Don, that I hope that the Board of Works sees through and does what's right for the city of Michigan City. And also, Don, I want to thank you for, uh, supporting that resolution. We had a great opportunity to do something great for the neighborhoods of Michigan City, and, um, through the, uh, mechanism, just even asking them to consider it, that it would benefit the west side, the east side, the north end, uh, uh, and it could be, uh, very instrumental on stabilizing the housing stock of Michigan City. Don, I want to thank you, uh, very much for that. And with those, uh, comments, which I believe it was a mechanism that we could accomplish something that people wanted to do prior to this resolution, without spending our money with all the money that the Redevelopment Commission has and also had, and the money that we're paying off right now through bond issues. So, Don, thanks a lot. I, I think that, um, you know, we'll probably address this issue, uh, again. Thank you very much. Uh, I mean, Angie, uh, excuse me.
Thank you, Councilman Paul Privilinsky. Um, Councilman, um, Brian Dabney?
Uh, thank you, recognition, uh, Councilman Deitch, uh. Um, in regards to the double-tracking project, I, I understand there may be some consternation about the, the blocking of the, the crossings at this point. Uh, I believe it would be, it's somewhere around a, a ten, eleven-month timeframe, um, in order to, for them to do their work. I had not heard anything about them running out of money and have to do something to squeeze this project in. Um, I'm on a committee right now where we're actually doling out a bid of someone to do the brand-new train station. And, and I just see this project moving along, you know, ever since we got started years and years ago. Um, and, uh, there's gonna be some, some change in traffic patterns, uh, through there. But, uh, in the end, when this is said and done, the, the plans that I've seen, the finances that I have, that I, I can't share with public right now, but I don't know whether the, the, the narrative came out that they're maybe losing money. They have to do something to, to dump this project. This project is four hundred and sixty-nine million or so. Um, with most of the work actually taking place in Michigan City. We're the only, uh, city along the route that has the tracks in the, in the middle of the, uh, street there, so that's why, you know, more work is having to be done in Michigan City. In the end, the, the commute is supposed to go down. I used to catch the train over here at Carroll Avenue when going to Chicago. I worked over there years ago. It's about an hour, forty minutes one way. Uh, once this double-tracking is done, um, their advertising, this will be about just a little over an hour, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so it's gonna cut, cut down the commute time and all of the benefits that this is gonna have. At the end, we're putting ourselves in a position where we're basically making Michigan City closer to Chicago, when it's all said and done. We could have people that could take that, that ride over to Chicago and then come back home to, to Michigan City and buy homes and things of that sort, but work down in Chicago. But gives us that advantage of having some of those places like they had in Lake County. They're closer. Uh, so they commute into Chicago and, and, and bring their money back over here to Indiana, and they live in Indiana. Uh, I do understand, uh, Councilman Don Presiblinsky's, uh, um, issue with the closing of the, uh, of the crossings, and I won't, you know, try to poo-poo that. That is a, a serious concern. And he did give the date down, and after I'm done, if you want to, uh, again, of the, the Board of Works meeting, if people want to public, public a comment about that, I think that's important that the public do, uh, um, chance to say something about that, um. But I'm looking forward to this, and, and hopefully, you know, we, we get this thing moving. Um, so we can get this project going. This is gonna be huge for Michigan City, uh, from what I'm seeing. And, uh, you know, what we're doing in terms of what that new station is gonna look like. I can't wait to reveal these, these plans. Um, once we're all said and done, I think it's gonna be something nice. Thank you.
Thank you, and the Board of Works meeting is February, uh, twenty-second at ten, um, A M. As I, I believe is the time, a- and if that's, so, i- and it will be, um, by Zoom. Um, did you have something else, uh, Councilman Don Privilinsky?
Uh, you, you had mentioned the, uh, date and time for the Board of Works meeting. And if any citizens that are listening to the council meeting, uh, today, or if this gets on the radio or what have you, that certainly folks need to let the Board of Works members know exactly how they feel, uh, about this subject, because it's their city. They're the ones that are gonna be driving the neighborhoods and trying to get through the, uh, get through the traffic jams once they close these down. Because, uh, the way I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody on the council, that depending on if they vote to close these intersections down, that these roads are gonna, Eleventh Street is gonna be closed down, I believe, by the end of the month. And all those intersections are gonna be closed off by the end of the month. And the only three intersections that are gonna be left open again are Washington Street, Franklin Street, and Wabash Street. That's it. So by the end of February, Michigan City's gonna be split in half.
Okay, and it's Tuesday at eight-thirty. Um, thank you, Miss, Ms. Nyla.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla.
All right, any additional comments from the council? Well, I, I have a couple, um, announcements that I want to make sure, um, that came out. Um, so, just a reminder to the public that, um, we have an awards and commissions, and Ms. Ziegus, I owe you something. Um, Boards and Commissions Workshop, uh, February twenty-third, by Zoom at five-thirty P M. We're gonna be covering, uh, some accounting items and proper rules of order. Um, also, we will attempt to get out the recording from the last, um, Board and Commission, um, workshop that we did, um, talking about agendas and, and meeting etiquette, et cetera. We'll, uh, get that, um, posted somewhere so that people can just click on the link and, and access it. Um, to the council, the mayor's called a, a workshop that was sent out late this afternoon um, to discuss the LIT tax, um, the local income tax that has been floating around the county. Um, county, uh, conversations in local towns here in La Porte County. That is at four P M. by Zoom on this Thursday. Um, just wanted to provide that information. And then, um, lastly, a couple of things, um, I, I just want to talk about, um, housing, um, just a, a moment. Because I, I know, um, the, there was some amendments that were done, um, uh, to the Redevelopment Authority in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, um, that allows us to create a HO-TIF, which is a housing TIF. And I just wanted to make sure that the council understands that, a- as a member of the R D C, um, that we have been looking at establishing a housing TIF, and it's a new vehicle. It's not something that's been here um, for years and years. It was an amendment that happened in twenty nineteen um, and twenty twenty to allow us that opportunity to do that. Um, second, um, we've had the C D B G funds, uh, here in Michigan City for years to help us establish um, opportunities for citizens to get their houses fixed. Um, we've created some homes on the west side. Um, I, I just don't want us to, um, not, you know, a- acknowledge the fact that we've done that. Um, and, and a couple of other things, um, you know, we're working, you know, hand-in-hand with several developers, and, and one of the things that we have talked about, which will happen I'm here, in, in short order at some point in time, is that one thing that we're looking at is working with developers to use land acquisition funds to subsidize additional housing outside of the TIF. So, you know, I, I don't want, um, anyone to think that we're not looking forward to forward-thinking as far as housing is concerned, um, and, and the community. Um, but the C D B G funds have been established in that manner to use it, but the HO-TIF is a, a new opportunity and vehicle that we can use in the future for housing. So, um, I just wanted to share that with the public. Um, as far as housing, there is a lot to come here in, in, in the coming months and years for housing, and, um, there are gonna be many opportunities, and it will be mixed-use, affordable workforce, uh, market rate. So, um, with that being said, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Um, thank you, um, Councilman Paul Privil, I mean, Don Privilinsky. And, um, support, I heard a couple, so, thank you again for, um, for, uh, staying tuned, and if, uh, you have any questions or concerns, you know how to reach all your council members. Thank you, and everybody have a good evening.
Good evening.